I'd like to call the Monday, June 3rd, 2019 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Laurie. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And may we have a report on the minutes of our May 6th regular session and work session? Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I reviewed the minutes from both meetings and I found them to be correct and complete and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So ordered. Under status reports, we have a couple of nominations for some of our citizen volunteer committees. We have a beautification committee and we had two openings and I'm pleased to report that Yuri Churney and Peter Davies have agreed to serve on our beautification committee. And on our property maintenance board, we have volunteers in each of our four districts, is that right? Four, five districts, I'm sorry. And Bill Draper and John Donnelly have agreed to serve on the property maintenance board representing District B. So I would make a motion that those folks be appointed to those respective committees. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So ordered. You will be in contact with them when they need to come to their next meeting. Thank you very much. That concludes the status report section of our meeting. We have two special visitors here this evening. Joe Fulford and Tim Benford are here to talk about electric vehicle trends and we would welcome you to come down to the podium, speak into the microphone so the folks at home can hear what you have to report to us. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you for the time. So you have a hand out in front of you and I'm just going to walk you around it clockwise. And then for the last quadrant, I'm going to step off the stage and let Mr. Benford wrap it up for us.
Very good.
So we just want to spend a few minutes here helping you understand what's coming with the world of transportation, the benefits to Oakwood and information on some grant dollars. You have a quad chart in front of you. The top left, we'll start off with the top left quad there. You can see the sales now are about 2% of sales, which is quite small, but by 2025, it's a steep curve, 22%, and by 2030, it'll be about 40% of sales. That's all because battery prices are coming down. The magic number is $100 per kilowatt hour. They're about $190 per kilowatt hour right now. So what you're seeing is EV ownership reaching parity with gas-powered vehicles. So 60% is pretty conservative, 60 to 75% is more likely as far as operating costs, lifetime ownership, operating costs. And you're sitting amongst a region that is the highest in 15 Midwest cities, 70% sales up since 2017. And you may know that smart cities, Department of Transportation has awarded $50 million to Columbus. Their sales were up 65% over the last year and a half to build out what we call mobility or transportation infrastructure, electric vehicle chargers, smart vehicles, and that sort of thing. And then that last bullet there in that first quad, I think will be especially of interest to you, is you all know about the VOA scandal with the diesel, the smog, the smog measuring devices that were corrupt, I guess. They settled for $3 billion and that money went to the EPA and it was divided out to the states.
It was $3 billion, wasn't it?
$3 billion, $3 billion with a B, yes, sir. And so the first group of monies is going to be released here in the fall, but they're putting out calls for proposals to replace vehicles. And they'll pay for up to 75% of a municipal vehicle, trucks, diesels, airport tugs, just anything that's a diesel-powered vehicle, they're going to replace. So there is a webinar on Wednesday, 10:30, and I'm going to leave behind a sheet with you with some links. So you can go to that Ohio EPA website and look and find out when that webinar is. It's at 10:30 this Wednesday and then there's another one in July to give you all the information on how to apply for those grants. Okay, so you see there in the middle, there's a couple of chargers in Oakwood. They're tucked away in the corner of Dorothy Lane Market. There's one Tesla charger and one regular charger. But as you can see in that trend chart there, it's, there's going to be a need for more chargers. And so we're here in part today to help you get in front of the need for chargers and not be surprised when you, when you see that there's many more Oakwood residents driving around and visitors to our businesses. Bottom right-hand chart, you'll see again lots of Bs there, lots of billions of dollars from all the major automakers. And they're all investing billions because the cost of ownership now that the battery prices have come down makes these very desirable. Cadillac will be GM's electric vehicle model. They're positioning Cadillac to be a purely electric vehicle platform. Volvo, half of their models will be electric by 2025. BMW will have a dozen models. Ford, Chrysler, Toyota, Honda, Nissan, all those manufacturers will all have heavy stakes. And you can see there again with the billions of dollars invested. So the bottom line is electric vehicles will be commonplace in Oakwood and you will expect to see them coming from other parts of the region to come visit the shops of Oakwood. So with that, let me introduce you to Tim Benford. And Tim is with Drive Electric Dayton. So you have some resources right here in Oakwood.
Thanks very much.
Welcome, Tim.
Joe, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Duncan, Oakwood City Council members, city manager and staff. Yeah, I'm Tim Benford from Greenmarket Boulevard and a plug-in electric vehicle owner, or P-E-V. As the president of Drive Electric Dayton's chapter of the Electric Auto Association, I'd like to put the global P-E-V challenge described by Joe into a more local perspective. Drive Electric Dayton's mission is to help accelerate the transition of P-EVs in the Dayton area by providing monthly events such as P-EV ride and drives to help residents become accustomed to P-EVs and to be able to ask questions of enthusiastic owners. We've gone from zero members in mid-2017 to 385 members today, of whom 37 live in Oakwood. Our members own 179 P-EVs and hybrids of various kinds, including 98 Teslas. There are 230 members who don't yet own a P-EV but are very enthusiastic about buying one. So why is that? Well, apart from the instant torque and quick acceleration of P-EVs, they are also cheap to run. The U.S. Department of Energy points out that in Ohio, the cost of refueling a P-EV with electricity compared to a similar vehicle that runs on gasoline is about a third. So an e-gallon costs $1.11 versus $2.71 of a gallon of gas. Another example, in my last 13 months of Tesla Model 3 ownership, I have spent only $48 on maintenance for a tire rotation done in my driveway by Tesla Mobile. Now, Oakwood residents with a plug-in EV like me and Joe will mostly charge their vehicles at home in the garage when they need a fill-up. But public chargers will be needed by visitors to Oakwood, such as shoppers, diners, workers, vacationers, and business people. Examples would be in public parking behind the shops of Oakwood, the OCC, and behind the shops adjacent to the city buildings. The need may be minimal right now, but as Joe indicated, the growth of PED adoption appears to be exponential. Indeed, the International Energy Agency, in its 2019 annual report, predicts there will be no less than 250 million P-EVs on the roadway, on the roads worldwide by 2030. And that's only 11 years' time. So in sum, I'd like to offer the support of my contacts with the Electric Auto Association, Clean Fuels Ohio, and others in Columbus to assist the city council in any way you see fit to ensure that Oakwood is a shining example of a Dayton municipality that continues to prepare for the sustainable transportation future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I've left a lot of very interesting electric vehicle brochures with Laurie for you to peruse at your leisure.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Tim or Joe? All right. Well, this is very interesting. We appreciate this information that you've had to us. I want to particularly point out to the people watching at home tonight that in addition to this project, Joe is also the president of the Wright Memorial Library Board, and we appreciate your service there for our community. And your spouses run the care walk for 18 years, or about as long as it's been around. So obviously, we appreciate all the community services you've given to our, to our community. And Tim, we welcome you as well. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Can you?
Steve, can you come, could you come to the microphone and, and address your question so that people at home can hear it?
I was wondering if the city trucks here can be retrofitted as opposed to purchasing new vehicles?
The answer is yes to that. The grants are for alternative fuels and for electric. So it's just how you write the grant up. And it's all on the link that we've left behind for you to click on.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Well, our next special guest has already been to the podium, but it is Steve Kelch. And Steve is going to talk to us about the history of Smith Gardens. Welcome, Steve. Good to see you again.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I'm used to having my drum kit in front of me and a mic I can sing into, but I'll see how this goes. This is about Carlton Smith, and you all know Smith Gardens, I'm sure. And I've been blessed to and proud to be made the chair for the fundraising committee for the garden, thanks to Carol and her associates. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a little bit of history about Carlton and Jeanette Smith. He was born in 1889 in Appleton, Wisconsin. He attended a small, local elementary school. He was later accepted to Lawrence College, and I'm going to kind of just move along here, later accepted to Lawrence College, where he met his bride-to-be, Jeanette Hawes, whose father was the mayor of Appleton. He was interested in government as well as horticulture. And so what happened was is Jeanette's father was going to retire and he convinced Carlton to run for the mayorship, which he won. So he became the mayor of Appleton. And he and Jeanette were then married and they decided that they were going to move to Dayton, Ohio. So they did and started their family. They had four daughters, three of whom stayed in Oakwood, graduated all their kids from Oakwood High School. The only one who didn't was Aunt Fran, who moved to Washington Courthouse. Her husband is a will lawyer there, very prominent, had been there for years. So, but the Kelches, the Graffs, and the Tuversons all stayed in Oakwood and raised all their kids here and graduated them all from, from Oakwood High School. He worked at a local paper company while he was mayor and, and became interested in the paper industry. They moved in early 1930s and he bought the house next to the vacant lot on Walnut Lane, which that is the vacant lot right there. He wanted the lot, obviously, for his garden. A real quick story, he had bought a house on a lake in Michigan and on his way to Michigan with his four daughters in the back of, back of the backseat, Jeanette in the driver's passenger seat, he would pull next to a Indiana person who had this giant garden in his front yard. And he would pull up in front of it and just sit and stare at it. No one in the car was allowed to make a sound. He would write, he would think, he would see, never met the man, never, never asked about him. He just looked at his garden. He had streams and ponds and everything. Well, this is what, what happened to Smith Gardens. This is where it all started. He, when he came to Dayton, he, he founded and was president of the American Envelope Company in West Carrollton. And it was not named West Carrollton after Carlton. Everybody asked me that and that's not the case. He, while he was there, he and his design team invented the Carlton clasp, which is the clasp that goes behind the envelope, okay? That all came from him going to church and seeing people putting money in envelopes, sealing them, putting them in the coffer, and then knowing that somebody had to open each and every one of those envelopes, take the money out, and then discard it, which he thought was a waste. So he was thinking, why don't we have an envelope that can be reused? So this is what caused him to do the clasp, which later, you know, became the string one when his patent was up. But he did patent it, became very successful in not only business, businesses worldwide, but also consumers. That was called the American Envelope Company. He retired in 1959, and then Kimberly Clark bought his division in 1961. He took some of that earnings from that sale, which was very much, and invested in Phillips Industries for the Phillips Screw, or Cooper Industries, which had invented the Phillips Screw, which made it a lot easier for plane and cars because before it was just this and you had to line it up. Now it's just, you just put it in and it's already there. So he, again, he was thinking, always thinking. At this time, from 1936, he was planning, designing, and excavating the garden with the help of a man called Romaine Beware. He was a renowned architect, I believe from New York, in natural-flowing streams and ponds. So he hired Roman to come and work with him side by side to form the ponds, which you see in the picture now, which is what he did first. He did the, the stream and the pond first and then progressively built the flowers around it. In 1940, it was on the front page and also in Nature, the Nature magazine, pictures of that, articles on Roman Beware and Carlton. He, let's see, he was often mistaken for a hired gardener by his visitors who started to come after he started planting some of the flowers, which you see there. That's really early on. In his battered straw hat, grass-stained trousers, kneepads made from cut-up old tires, which I remember as a little kid. He'd cut them into pieces and put them over his knee and then strap them on. His rake in his hand and a spade in his back pocket. And his sidekick Willie, whose real name was Willis, but I always called him Willie, he met him at a friend at church and asked him to work with him, and he did. And he and Willie had an old pickup truck. So he and Carlton would go to Yellow Springs and get the rocks from, what is it, Saint Bryant Park? What's the park in?
John Bryant.
John Bryant. And they allowed him to take the rocks, which is now incorporated in his garden. But he also had to do work on what he took to make sure that it continuously flowed, which he did, wholeheartedly. And they still thank him to this day for what he did because it kept it, it kept it very vibrant in that area. So he was very, very nature-oriented. Okay, so, let's see. It's, he would work from sunup to sundown, always out there. Friday nights was the only night that he and Jeanette would have dinner together. And he always brought a rose, which I think there's a picture of her standing. He, did, did you all get the Oakwood Register and see the article about the peace rose that he got second place on? Somebody else won it. Out of 444, I guess, entries, Carlton got second and this other fellow got first. And they called it the peace rose. Well, he had a famous rose garden in the garden, as well as also a tulip garden. And he would always bring one rose up to the table for he and Jeanette to have their dinners on Friday nights. Because the other times he was working, she always made dinner for him and she was already done when he came up. So, but it's the way, it's the way they did things and, but they all, you never saw them without them holding hands. They always held hands everywhere they went. They really were truly a lovely couple. Well, as time went on, the garden grew. There's Jeanette with one of her gardens, or one of her roses. 50 years they were married. He just kept working on his garden. Of course, he was retired by now, but spent most of his time in the garden. And time took its toll. He had a stroke in the garden in his late, early 80s and never recovered. He passed away in 1975? No, he passed away in 1973. Jeanette, who had some medical issues, died of a broken heart, the doctor said. She just couldn't live without him. So there they are. And so she passed away soon after in 1975. Let's see. Okay, upon his death, his house was sold with the proceeds going to the garden, which to this day still, I guess, is generating some type of income. And at this time, they were in search of someone to take care of the garden, as well as the city of Oakwood Green Spaces. So Carol Collins came along, which she is celebrating her 45th year this year, 45 years of her life.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I think we need to pause for that. I mean, seriously. So anyway, obviously, she's done a tremendous job with, you know, garden clubs, weddings, music, paver memorials, you know, the plant sale, just, it's endless what she's done with the garden and, and the different situations that have arisen from it. They were very giving people. Carlton and Jeanette were very giving people. They had numerous luncheons and dinners with dignitaries from all over the country and all over the world that came and stayed at their house and visited the garden and always mentioned Oakwood as being one of the most loveliest cities they'd ever seen. So that's a tribute to all of you folks and all those who live here. I just wanted to say that while he was living, he was named chairman of the Division on Foreign Corporations for the Community Chess Campaign. He was chairman of the Hospital Recreation Corps of the Montgomery County Chapter Tube Licker, Tube, I'm not sure how that meant, Hospital Soldiers Home in Dayton, Ohio. He was a devoted of, member of Grace United Methodist, where he donated a famous stained glass window of The Last Supper, which is still there above the, it's a three-tiered, beautiful, beautiful piece of art. He was past president of the Board of Trustees for Miami Valley Hospital, where he donated a much-needed baby aid device for premature baby deliveries, saving hundreds and hundreds of babies' lives through that donation alone. Jeanette was very involved in the local Red Cross chapters, receiving many distinguished awards for her services. The, I'm going to list the generous endowments, and I want to say before I get into that, I nominated him this year for the Dayton Walk of Fame. He didn't win, but I have a, I wanted to find out if you think I should add Jeanette and do both of them. Because he wouldn't be where he was if it weren't for her. And I think most of the endowments, which I had to list on the nomination, came from both of them. It wasn't just him saying, "Well, honey, let's give money to these people." I'm sure it was a, so I'm going to re-nominate him next year, but I think I'm going to add Jeanette this year. So I just want to let you know. And that was on behalf of not only my family, but the city of Oakwood. Okay, I'm just going to list these real quick. Dayton Art Institute, he donated a rare 17th-century Rubens painting, which is still there. Oakwood YMCA, Children's Medical Center, as mentioned, Smith Gardens, Mount Berry School, Widow's Home, the City Mission, Goodwill Industries, Volunteers of America, Berea College, Lawrence University, Senior Citizens Center of the Greater Dayton Area, Memorial Hospital for Cancer and Allied Diseases, Leonard Wood Memorial of New York, Carney Creek Community Center of Kentucky, Pining Woods Country Life School of Mississippi, Salvation Army, American Foundation for the Blind, Dayton YMCA and YWCA, the Dayton Foundation, Dayton Museum of Natural History, Christ United Methodist Church, Methodist Hospitals of Ohio. Those are all things that he set up endowments after his death. In closing, I wanted to thank you again for having me here, for this council and also for Carol and the city of Oakwood. And I can only hope that the Smith Gardens continue to be a place of beauty and peace for all those who visit for many years to come. And like the sign says, "In the Garden, Flowers Lovers Are Welcome to Browse in the Garden", signed Carlton W. Smith. Thank you. And on the events now are the events coming up for this next year, right? Yeah. And you can make a note of that and she also will have it. I'm sure they will have this in writing somehow. So please become, get involved, stay involved. It's a beautiful garden and it's a real tribute to the city of Oakwood. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Steve? We appreciate, you know, your service, serving as the chair of our campaign this year.
I'm honored.
And I, I hope that Skip and Martha Ordeman are watching this evening because they did that for about 10 years.
I just ran, I just ran into her. I take my blind friend shopping every day. He graduated from Oakwood, Bernard Altec. And I've done, I've worked with Bernie for 40 years probably. And we run into them at Kroger's all the time. And so I just ran into her and Nancy, her granddaughter, who graduated with me. And she's just as lovely as ever.
Well, that's great.
You know, she's wonderful. So.
Again, thank you.
And she withes me the best.
Thank you for your service, our, our great city. Alrighty. If there are anyone else that wishes to address council at this time as part of the visitor section, this would be your time to come down to speak to council. I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record and we would welcome you. Anyone else wish to address council at this time? Very good. We will then close the visitor section of our meeting and we will go to legislation. And Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a second reading, actually. So this is an ordinance to levy a permissive motor vehicles license tax pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 4504.173. This ordinance was introduced with a first reading at our May 13th meeting. As I mentioned before, at that meeting, Governor Dewine signed the 2019 Transportation Budget Bill on April 10th of this year. The bill included a provision allowing municipalities to levy a $5 permissive tax on the registration of all motor vehicles, with 100% of that money going to that municipality. The money must be used for authorized purposes, which include the maintenance and repair of public streets. The $5 fee would be collected as part of the annual licensing fees paid each time a motor vehicle is registered to an Oakwood address. That money, which is projected to be approximately $45,000 per year, would be used to supplement local tax dollars for maintaining our streets. The amount of money provided through the vehicle registration fee was last increased in 2006. Over the past 13 years, this revenue source has not changed other than the modest variations resulting from motor vehicles being licensed by Oakwood residents. This additional money will help us continue to maintain our public roadways in a first-class manner. And as I mentioned, this is a second reading, so I would move that council adopt this this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or discussions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing now. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And next, Mr. Stevens has an ordinance he'd like to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Adopting Section 375.10, shared mobility device. Uh, adopting Section three-seven-five-point-one-oh, shared mobility devices of the Oakwood Traffic Code to enact a one-year moratorium on the use of shared mobility, uh, devices, including the placement or operation thereof in any public right-of-way or on public property, and offering the same for use anywhere in the city. This is the first reading of an ordinance to impose a moratorium on the use of, quote, "dockless electric scooters and bicycles in the city rights of way." Dockless electric scooters and bicycles, which are available to be rented on demand from unstaffed locations, have arrived in many cities suddenly and unexpectedly, and have proliferated rapidly. Some of the most visible examples include Bird and Lime scooters, among others. These shared mobility devices are largely unregulated. They exist in a kind of legal limbo where despite some level of public demand, they cannot be used legally on sidewalks due to their status as, quote, "motor vehicles" under state law, nor can they be used legally on streets due to equipment limitations and the lack of adequate mechanisms for titling, registrating, registering, and insuring them. As a result, there are several lawsuits pending around the nation, and the Ohio General Assembly and a number of other state legislatures are considering possible frameworks for the regulation of shared mobility devices. Under the General Assembly, um, excuse me, uh, until the General Assembly determines a path forward for our state, the problems inherent with shared mobility devices have, must be addressed by local government. In cities where shared mobility devices are available, they are frequently abandoned by users wherever they happen to stop, in streets, sidewalks, doorways, and other public places. This creates visual clutter and more importantly, safety concerns, especially for the most vulnerable pedestrians. In addition, due to the spontaneous nature of these rentals and their appeal to young people, shared mobility devices are nearly always operated by users, often minors, without helmets. While we do not anticipate that Oakwood will be a major market for these devices, it is important to have legislation in place before the first vendor chooses to locate here. Council has initiated this moratorium legislation as an immediate way to address the hazards posed by shared mobility devices placed in and operated on public property. Our intent would be to revisit the issue in one year, when the legal landscape may have become more firmly settled. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Anyone have any questions for Councilmember Stevens? So we will deal with this at our July fifteen meeting and, uh, um, if you own your own electric scooter, this ordinance would not apply.
It's not applied.
You still can have your own electric scooter.
Correct.
Very good, thank you. Uh, and then finally, uh, Vice Mayor Byington also has an ordinance he would like to introduce.
Yes, Your Honor, um, this is an ordinance to amend Section One of the two thousand and nineteen, uh, original appropriations ordinances, number forty-eight-seventy, to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended from the General Equipment Replacement Fund for the cardboard drop-off station improvements, and an amount of twenty-five thousand to be transferred from the general fund to the General Equipment Replacement Fund. And I'll, I'll explain what all this means. Um, this is the first reading of a supplemental appropriation ordinance that will allow the city to expand its cardboard collection facilities at Krieger Field. Uh, the city currently operates a cardboard drop-off station at Krieger Field parking lot, uh, which is open twenty-four, seven, and allows residents to drop off recyclable, uh, cardboard materials outside their normal home pickup schedule. The station consists of two large top-loading dumpsters, containers, that have been equipped for public access by the construction of a ramp and wooden platform. Since installing the station a few years ago, it has been a, uh, huge success with our residents. Each year, we are receiving more and more cardboard, as attested by Amazon and all the other boxes that appear on everybody's porches almost constantly. Uh, we are now at the point where cardboard often accumulates beyond the capacity, beyond the next scheduled container pickup, and ends up piled up on the loading platform and around the containers. If you've ever been there on a Monday, um, it is usually overflowing. Uh, city staff has explored ways to increase our card, cardboard recycling capacity and was recently informed that the city has been approved for a grant from the Montgomery County Solid Waste District. This grant is in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, which will pay for a hundred percent of the cost to purchase two additional containers. Under the terms of the conditions of the grant, the city must pay for the, uh, entire cost of the containers upfront and being reimbursed by the Solid Waste District upon completion of the project. In order to, uh, to use the new containers alongside the existing containers, an expanded platform assembly must be built. That particular, particular line item is not funded by the grant, but can be done in-house by our own city employees at an estimated cost of seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And all the city's upfront cost will be twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, which will include the sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty for the two new containers and the seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two for the new platform and stair assemblies. Of that twenty-four thousand, uh, sixteen thousand will be reimbursed after the completion, uh, through the Solid Waste District grant. This, uh, project was not included in the original two thousand and nineteen budget adopted by council last December because the grant had not been approved at that time. Council believes this modest investment will benefit the public welfare by further promoting cardboard recycling and by ensuring adequate capacity and added efficiency for our resident, and wish to appropriate the necessary funds in two thousand and nineteen to take advantage of this grant opportunity. Uh, the sup, supplemental appropriation will authorize the transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from the city's general fund to the General Equipment Replacement Fund, from which these upfront expenditures will be made. I, uh, I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, because you're waiving the second reading, it would require a four-fifths vote by council. Uh, do we have any questions for Vice Mayor Byington regarding this? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation, uh, under staff report. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Denial, Your Honor.
Okay, is it possible that the Oakwood Register could print a picture of Carol Collins when she started her employment here? Just ask it. Again, thank you, Carol and, and Steve for, you know, uh, your staff report regarding, uh, Smith Gardens.
Yes.
Uh, in that case, we will then go to our city manager report.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. A few things to comment on. I'm gonna start with the tornado and, and just tell you that, um, you know.
What?
Tornadoes.
Tornadoes. Um, you know, Monday night, a week ago, I was sitting down in my basement watching a movie and, you know, I have to be honest, I'm one of these people that, when you hear, uh, stuff on the news about weather issues, you know, I listen kind of and, and I don't pay a whole lot of attention to it, but, um, obviously goes without saying that this thing kept growing and growing and, and then the sirens went off and, um, as you all know, uh, we were spared here in Oakwood, but that cannot be said for a number of our, our neighboring communities and, um, you know, you never, you, you don't wanna think that this could ever happen to you, but it did here in Dayton and I guess we, reminds us all to, uh, of the need to always be prepared, um, for the day when, when unfortunately it might happen to us. I had a phone call, uh, early on Tuesday morning from Shelley Dixtein, the city manager, my friend from Dayton, and she asked for any assistance that we might be able to provide. And as you know, we have sent a, uh, three Public Works employees, uh, a front-end loader, chainsaw, dump truck, uh, to the city of Dayton, beginning last Wednesday, every workday. Um, and we started again today and will continue this for the foreseeable future. Over the weekend, I, uh, took my stepson down to the area that we were, our Public Works folks were assisting in, and that's, uh, the area down, if you take Smithville north and go across thirty-five and just keep going up towards Smith, uh, Springfield Street, um, you run into that area. And what I saw was, of course, a lot of damage and, um, a lot of debris on the side of the street, and that's frankly what our folks have been helping to gather up and just, just haul away. And while, you know, three workers and a couple pieces of equipment is not a, a lot for a small community, it's our contribution and, and again, as I say, we're gonna continue to, to provide that as long as we can. And I know from, in talking with a number of my colleagues, uh, in other communities that were not affected, um, why they're all pitching in as well and helping. Uh, beyond that, uh, there's a lot of other ways that, uh, folks are helping here. Carol and her staff at the community center, uh, sent out an email last week, uh, offering up space in our large classroom for Oakwood citizens to drop off water, food supply, any sort of supplies that were, were of need and, uh, I believe today it was hauled off and, uh, that large classroom was, I would say, two-thirds to three-quarters full of, of items. And it took a number of, uh, employee, uh, workers and multiple truckloads to take it all to the, to the food bank. So, um, we've done that once and, and, uh, Lori Stanley, who works for Carol, um, has sent a email to the roughly two thousand addresses that we have here in Oakwood, uh, just this afternoon, announcing that first load is gone and offering to continue to keep gathering more items. So, uh, the particular items of need, I'm not gonna cite those tonight. I would suggest that folks, uh, call the OCC because I think that's ever-changing. Um, and we'll try to get something on our website tomorrow and try to keep that updated daily, for folks that wanna, wanna look there. Also, uh, you know that the water system in the city of Dayton was affected by the loss of, of, uh, power and, uh, for a couple days, when the city of Kettering, uh, had very, very low water pressure, why we offered up fire hydrants on the south side of town in the event of an emergency. Um, to my knowledge, that, that was not needed, but we had our hydrants available in case the Kettering Fire Department needed to fill, uh, their water tanks. And I'll just, uh, say one more comment about my stepson, Jack, and I going down, uh, last Saturday, we ended up, uh, going to Valley Street, Brant Pike in that area, and, uh, what we saw there was even more significant in terms of damage than, than the other areas further east, but, um, there were hundreds and hundreds of people there pitching in and helping in various different ways. We had a couple pickup trucks and my chainsaw and, you know, loaded up part of a roof and a bunch of branches and all that, but it was very, uh, it was amazing to see how everyone is pitching in and helping here. And, uh, I guess I'll end my comment on this by just reminding everybody to keep, you know, all those folks that were negatively affected by this in, in your thoughts. Um, and, and my commitment that we'll continue to help out as much as we can here from, from the city. A few other quick things, uh, the two thousand and eighteen financial audit is now completed. We all received an email this afternoon about that and we'll be posting the final report on our website soon. And I'm very pleased to report that it was a, an absolutely clean audit and, uh, again, Cindy Stafford, our finance director, and her staff are to be commended for, for their fine work. Uh, I've talked in the past about the, uh, the Vectren gas line project pretty much two or three times a year for the last five, six years. And, uh, tonight I'm here to report that the project is, has hit my neighborhood. And, uh, so work on East Shance and on Volusia, uh, east of Oakwood Avenue, um, is underway now and about a week or two ago, I received this door hanger and it has, was, has very good information about their project and, um, as I know, I've said here before, you know, this project now has a couple, three or four more years to it, but when it's done, all the gas infrastructure, the buried infrastructure in Oakwood will have been renewed. So it's a very important project. Um, a resident came to the counter this afternoon and we got, it was actually Maria Castleman, and we were talking about a couple things and this came up and Maria asked me, "Well, what, why is this necessary?" And I, and I, got me thinking that probably a lot of our citizens may not know the details of it, but the bottom line is that the, this gas infrastructure, when the piping was put in place, uh, what was available at the time in the industry standard was basically a bare steel pipe. And while, while our water system piping is made from cast iron, which is much more resistant to corrosion, bare steel is not. And so, uh, much of the older community gas infrastructure that has this, this bare steel piping has holes throughout it. And, you know, if you have good clay soils, why that clay almost, you know, keeps the low-pressure gas from coming out, but you have more permeable sands and gravel area, that gas comes up. And I know you've all been in areas where you can smell it. So it is a very important project and many, many millions of dollars being invested in, um, in that upgrade. The, uh, Oakwood Scene Newsletter, I, I wanna put a shout out for this again. You know, we get this every two months and, and if you've lived here for a long time, you might just kinda grab it and maybe even forget to open it and take a look at it, but, you know, every edition has some repetitive information about our refuse programs, but there's always some new stuff in here. And, you know, maps for the gas line project are in here. Uh, there's information about our stormwater permit, which is our federal requirement in here, in terms of, uh, not dumping into our catch basins and, uh, being careful with picking up after your pet and all these sorts of things that lead to, to stormwater, the, the contamin, potential contamination of stormwater runoff, you know, that gets to our rivers and streams, that's in here. Uh, there's information in here about our construction projects that are just now getting underway. On Ridgeway Road, we're replacing a whole bunch of, of broken concrete street. Uh, we'll be completing the asphalt resurfacing project, uh, beginning either in late June or early July, that's the schedule at this point. And our sidewalk curb and apron project is just now starting with some curb work on the streets that will be milled and overlaid, the asphalt streets. All those streets are named here in the, in the newsletter. There's a article in here about hazardous waste disposal and the fact that the Oakwood Rotary Club, uh, once a quarter will free of charge, travel around the community on a Saturday morning and pick up pesticides, herbicides, paints, you know, varnishes, all that sort of thing, and see that it's properly disposed of. That's a nice article. And I'll just kinda leave it at that. The Blanket Concerts are in here and a couple of other things, but if you, if a citizen has misplaced this, it's always available on our website, uh, right there from the homepage. So I just wanna mention that. Uh, the Farmer's Market, someone else may mention this, but it started last, uh, Saturday and, and will go through October. Uh, our Schaefer Park Tennis Court, uh, project, um, you know, we rebuilt the courts last, uh, summer or fall and we've had some, a few failures in the court surface and the, uh, we sent a press release to the Register last Friday, but the, the contractors, uh, standing by their work one hundred percent, they're warrant, we'll, we'll be doing warranty repairs. Um, and the schedule for that kinda has three parts to it. There'll be some minor repairs done, uh, this, yet this spring and this summer. Uh, and then the courts will be inspected, be, so the courts will be available for the fall tennis season for the high school. And then the courts will be inspected just before the, uh, winter or spring tennis season next year in two thousand and twenty, and any required patching or repairs will be made. And then the big project, uh, will take place next spring, April, May, June, July, uh, probably a two-and-a-half-month period, uh, where the contractor will take off an inch and a half of the surface and redo it. And that, again, is, uh, under warranty, there'll be no cost to the, uh, city of Oakwood or the Oakwood schools. It's an unfortunate situation, um, but again, we're happy that the contractor is, is owning it. And my last comment, uh, has to do with, uh, the Montgomery County Auditor, received word late last week that, uh, the revaluation work, which is a two thousand and twenty project, is actually just getting underway and, uh, some, a company by the name of, um, Lexur, Appraisal Services, L-E-X-U-R, uh, low, here locally in the Dayton area, is hired by, uh, the county auditor to do some, uh, field work in terms of, you know, reevaluating properties. So over the next few weeks, uh, we'll see vehicles driving around Oakwood and, uh, the, they're all, uh, working for the auditor and if, if folks have any questions about it, um, they can call the city here or the public safety department. So that's all I have.
I know we should probably give a shout out to DPNL for the Yuma's work that they've been doing as related to the tornado. I know Stephanie, you come here and listen to this all the time, but please take it back to your people that, uh, we really do appreciate the efforts of, uh, DPNL through, through these terrible times.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned that because an observation I had, particularly in that, that Valley Street, Brent, the, the number of, of wires that were down was more than I've ever seen. It's just a, uh, an enormous rebuilding process.
All right. Any questions for our city manager? Uh, hearing none. It would be now time for council comments and, uh, Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Hilton?
No comments, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Uh, just real quick, uh, follow-up on the, uh, tornado discussion. Um, you know, fortunately for, uh, city of Oakwood, we were not affected directly, but obviously we are affected. And, and if you have friends or relatives, uh, that were affected, uh, we are affected, and if you have friends or relatives that were affected, please reach out to them and remind them to, in the repair world, whether it's done via insurance or not through insurance, use local contractors. Too many times in windstorms and crises like this, there are storm chasers that are out there, and they really are, and I'm sure a lot of people around here are not familiar with them, because we haven't had many, you know, situations like this. They'll come in, do this work, they're gone, and in two or three years, you'll have a problem, and there's no one to fix it, and it's hard to get someone to fix that work. So use local contractors, do your research, and I know that sounds hard to do, and the fact that you want to get yourself back to, you know, where you need to be as soon as possible, but it's a long process, you have to be patient, and you want to get the work done right. So that's my, that's my comment on that. And then as far as volunteering, you know, I've been all over social media, seeing everything that's being done, and it's fabulous, it makes me proud to be a, you know, citizen of the Miami Valley, and, you know, I even called someone today in Brookville, and I was told that they are actually telling people now, "We're fine here, we don't need more volunteers." And that tells you right now how much, because I saw pictures of Brookville, they're not asking for more help that way. They may need some help in other ways, but they don't need the volunteers. They are directing people to Trotwater, Dayton. I know, for example, the Oakwood football team and the Oakwood wrestling team went today to Beaver Creek to help out. Beaver Creek needs a lot of support right now and volunteer. What I'm trying to say is, is that we're what, you know, a week away, and there's people still going, there's still a lot of work to be done. Don't think because you didn't go this week that you can't go next week, or in two weeks. There will be places that need a lot of help, and all to a different level, and donations will obviously be accepted. So just because you haven't been able to go due to whatever situation you have, there are still volunteer efforts that need to be done in North Ridge. I know there's a group going there tomorrow that I was, that I saw, you know, North Dayton, Beaver Creek, Riverside, I can't name them all, but, you know, there's still efforts to be done. If you have any time in the next few days, this weekend, if you can't go during work, I understand, go this weekend. I'm just asking, you know, our citizens of Oakwood to put in some effort and go help for a few hours. A few hours of your help is better than nothing. So the whole, the whole community can get together and do some wonderful volunteer work and help out our neighbors, you know, because I got to believe they'd come to help us if we had a crisis. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, just building on that just a little bit, I will say, if you're out volunteering, please be safe about it. I spent a lot of time on Saturday out at, in the Clayton area, and I have experience with a chainsaw, but there were a lot of folks who did not have experience with chainsaws who should not have been using them. And it sounds funny, but it's not funny when you're actually out there trying to get stuff done, and you're worried about children's safety, and just for the people themselves. Make sure that you're taking all the precautions you need to. Wear the ear protection, wear the eye protection, and make sure that you're checking the chain tension, and making sure that it's oiled up. I know that everybody's trying to get things done as quickly as possible, but I would encourage everybody to be as safe as possible. We really don't want to add to any of this tragedy by a horrible accident. On a happier note, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Stevens for fantastic weather for our That Day in May celebration that we had a couple of weekends ago. It was absolutely beautiful. It's one of the events that I'm very proud of as an Oakwood Rotarian and an Oakwood citizen. The community comes together, and we have a lot of fun, but we also raise a lot of money for the Oakwood Rotary Foundation. I don't know what the final total is, I know it's over $40,000 that we've raised on that weekend. All that money goes into the foundation, which then gets turned around into programs that are in Oakwood, but throughout the Miami Valley. We give the money away to various different charities and causes that are important to the region, so I imagine we'll probably be giving money to tornado victims here pretty soon as well. So it was a great event, and I thank all of the community for coming out and supporting that.
Very good. Thank you. Thursday marks the 75th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy during World War II. Over 156,000 United States, British, and Canadian troops participated in the largest amphibious invasion in military history. The order of the day issued by General Dwight D. Eisenhower was as follows. Soldiers, sailors, and airmen of the Allied Expeditionary Force, you are about to embark upon a great crusade towards which we have striven these many months. The eyes of the world are upon you. The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere are marched with you. In company with our brave allies and brothers in arms on other fronts, you will bring about the destruction of the German war machine, the elimination of Nazi tyranny over oppressed peoples of Europe, and security for ourselves in a free world. Your task will not be easy, be an easy one. Your enemy is well-trained, well-equipped, and battle-hardened. He will fight savagely. But this is the year 1944. Much has happened since the Nazi triumphs of 1940, 1941. The United Nations have inflicted upon the Germans great defeats in open battle, man to man. Our air offensive has seriously reduced their strength in the air and their capacity to wage war on the ground. Our home fronts have given us an overwhelming superiority in weapons and munitions of war, and placed all at our disposal great reserves of armed, trained, fighting men. The tide has turned. The free men of the world are marching together to victory. I have full confidence in your courage, devotion to duty, and skill in battle. We will accept nothing less than full victory. Good luck, and let all beseech the blessing of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking. Over 4,400 Allied troops died on D-Day. Total Allied deaths in the Battle of Normandy, which lasted through August 1944, exceeded In his book, The Guns That Last Light, author Rick Atkinson quotes a soldier, "No war is really over until the last veteran is dead." Over 16 million Americans were in uniform during the Second World War. He estimates the number of living World War II veterans was about 1 million five years ago, and five years from now, the number will be less than 100,000. He concludes his book thusly, "Yet the war, and all the war contained, nobility, villainy, immeasurable sorrow, is certain to live on even after the last old soldier has gone to his grave. May the earth lie lightly on his bones." Thank you for letting me read that, and our next meeting is July 15, 2019. We are adjourned.